Good evening, and this time I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council Meeting. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Monday evening, March 2nd, 2020. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed several times over the next week on the Town's cable information channel, 1301, and will also be available for viewing on the Town's website. I'm Steve McDougall, I'm the Mayor of the Town of Lexington. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Protam Hazel Livingston.
Good evening.
To her left is Councilmember Todd Carons.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Steve Baker.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Good evening.
To her right is Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Bill Shanahan if you would not mind, since you're here with us tonight, if you would offer invocation for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bow your heads, please. Lord, thank you for this opportunity to be at the Town of Lexington's Council Meeting. Thank you for all, and the many blessings on the citizens of this wonderful town that you created. Let your will be done tonight in tonight's meeting. Let us be reminded that you created us to glorify you. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen. At this time, Xavier, since you're here with us tonight on a special occasion, if you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, if everyone will please stand.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Very good, I threw you under the hot seat there. You did very well, thank you. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. We will report on our executive session this evening. Tonight's executive session, we had two legal issues, one issue regarding pending litigation, and one issue was advice regarding agenda items. We had two contractual issues. One was an issue regarding downtown development, and the other issue was regarding a sewer contract. No vote was taken in executive session, other than to vote to adjourn executive session. Is there a motion to ratify the mayor's executive session report?
Say may.
Ms. Livingston makes a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Carons, second, so motion, all is in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Deletions on the agenda, are there any deletions of any of the items on tonight's agenda? There are no deletions, but we do need to move two items. We are going to move one of the proclamations. Ms. Kathy Manis is going to read the census proclamation for Mr. Todd Lyle, he is not with us tonight, and Mr. Carons is going to read item number one of new business when it comes up. Anything else? Very good, we will move right into approval of minutes. Copies of the minutes from the council work session on February 18, 2020 were provided to you in your packets. Are there any omissions, additions, or corrections to work session, February 18, 2020? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
The moved.
Mr. Williams makes a motion, Ms. Manis, second, so motion, all is in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we'll move right into presentations. Our first presentation this evening is from Councilmember Todd Carons. Councilmember Carons.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to do a presentation tonight for Lexington's probably newest Eagle Scout, Xavier Gonzalez, and so I'm going to ask you Xavier, if you would go stand right there at that podium, bring your family with you, if I get the entire family up there, so we can get you guys on camera. And we've got a letter of commendation that we want to provide to you tonight, so let me read this for you guys. "On behalf of the Town of Lexington, it is my privilege to honor you on receiving the highest advancement rank of Eagle Scout. We're very proud of you and your accomplishments and dedication to the Boy Scouts of America. There's a long list of fine American leaders that also achieved the Eagle Scout ranking during their youth. Many succeeded in careers that continued to be influenced by the training they received as scouts. You too will have many opportunities open to you because of your commitment and your desire to overcome obstacles. Your project to distribute foster care bags to foster children in Lexington was very admirable. You certainly made a difference in your community by assembling 122 duffel bags with gender-specific items included for DSS to have when they need to remove a child. As we know, the children sometimes have to leave in a hurry and do not have many personal hygiene items. Plus, it gives them a real duffel bag to use instead of a trash bag. You've demonstrated that today's youth believe in character, honesty, and integrity. All these characteristics are critical for all of us to succeed in making our communities and our world a better place. Xavier, as you embark on your future, no matter where your path leads, we want you to know that you have our support and will always, and we will always be available to you." So as a token of our appreciation for your hard work, I would like to present to you on behalf of the mayor and the council, a gold lapel pen with the Town of Lexington seal. Keep this as a reminder that no matter where your success takes you, you can always remember your strong roots run deep in this community, and that we are very proud of you. Congratulations Xavier.
Good job.
And I'm going to come bring you this letter and this pen, but before I do, I wanted to give you a chance to say something, if you would like to say something to us all here.
Thank you very much for your appreciation. I'm very grateful to have, to have had the opportunity to give back to my community with my Eagle project, and thank you for this honor.
Nice job.
Well done, well done. And I want to say before these guys get out of here, they happen to live in my neighborhood, and they're very active in our neighborhood and our community. Great, great citizens, and we're proud to have you guys in Lexington.
Our next presentation this evening is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. This is a proclamation of Census Day, April 1st, 2020. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas Article 1, Section 2 of the United States Constitution mandates that a census stating "Representatives and direct taxes shall be apportioned among the states according to their respective numbers with the next census to be held on April the 1st, 2020." Whereas the 2020 census will address every household in the nation with a simple questionnaire with the goal of counting everyone only once and in the right place, which must include the children who were undercounted in the 2010 census by 1 million in the United States for ages five and under. Whereas the Town of Lexington formed a Complete Count Committee in January of 2019 with the Town's Advisory Committee, who with their knowledge, influence, and resources are key to educate the community through outreach activities to increase awareness and participation in the 2020 census in order to avoid undercounting in areas which have historically been hard to count and could create a decade worth of issues for federal program funding for South Carolina such as Medicaid for children and others. Whereas data collected from the 2020 census drives important decisions for government and the public, including apportionment of legislators, drawing district lines, distribution of $675 billion in federal funding to states and communities, of which South Carolina receives approximately $7.3 billion in census allocated funds for transportation, education, healthcare, economic development, community services, fair housing, public safety, emergency preparedness, and other revenues to municipalities. Whereas businesses use census statistics to decide where to build or expand, and developers use census statistics to determine where to build new homes and where to revitalize older neighborhoods, all of which create jobs and improves the quality of life. Whereas personal census data is protected by the federal government and by law cannot be shared with law enforcement agencies, immigration enforcement agencies are used to determine one's ability for government benefits, and in fact, census workers are sworn to a lifetime of secrecy and can face up to five years in prison and a $250,000 fine for disclosing personal information. Individual records from the census are confidential for 72 years. They're still waiting on the release of the 1950 census information, which will not be released for two more years. Whereas the first 2020 census mailers or self-response invitations will go out mid-March, and the citizens are encouraged to respond to the census by phone, mail, or for the first time ever, online, which will eliminate the need and expense to have a census worker knock on their door starting in mid-May. Whereas the Town of Lexington has experienced a high rate of growth since the 2010 census, which makes it even more important to have each citizen respond correctly and promptly to the census invitation, as it is of utmost importance for the benefit and opportunities for our citizens, plus it's our civic duty. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and council of Lexington, South Carolina, that the upcoming date of April the 1st, 2020 be declared census day in the Town of Lexington, and for all to recognize the importance of the 2020 census, and to pledge full support to the U.S. Census Bureau in order to achieve a complete and accurate census count, and to ensure that South Carolina receives its fair share of federal resources and funding. Signed the 2nd day of March, 2020, Steve McDougall, Mayor.
Very good, thank you Kathy. I think we're going to let Lauren take that and show that to the advisory committee who worked so hard on that. Thank you Lauren. Our next presentation this evening is from Mr. John Klinger and Mr. Bill Shanahan, if you'd like to come forward. This is a presentation of the Lexington County Chili Cook-Off. Mr. John Klinger is from the Old Mill Brew Pub, and Mr. Bill Shanahan and his wife are from the Lexington County Blowfish. This is to the Lexington Police Department Foundation Chief, if you'd like to come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. On behalf of Vicki and I, and John and Kelly Klinger, this was, the best thing that ever came out of Pennsylvania was John and Kelly Klinger moving to Lexington.
Ah, great of them.
And it was his vision to, to create our own Chili Cook-Off. And the first year we did it, we did it out at the ballpark, and then you all did something wonderful, you built an amphitheater. And we moved it, and it just continues to grow out there, and big kudos to all of you. And also, I want to acknowledge Walker Brewer has done an amazing job for you out there. So I don't know when the raises come in fiscal year, but I would definitely want to take care of him. But John, I'm going to hand it over to John, and to present the check to our great police chief.
Well, this is a far cry from that 7.1 billion hopefully South Carolina will get, but it's something left over for, from proceeds, from the sales, all the sales from the food, the chili receipts, beer, and freeway music during a little. So something we can give back to the community. Obviously, there's two recipients this year, but we of course love our chief of police here.
Oh, is he there?
Yeah.
We're in the, in the progress of, we got a board, Laurie's one of our vice chair, but we're in the progress of buying vests for our K9 units, and they're very expensive, so this is where that money will go to, to protect them when they got to go in homes, to protect us. So if we could get a picture.
Absolutely, y'all come forward, let's get a quick picture.
And let us add that the Town of Lexington Police won the People's Choice Award. There was a fix in, but that's okay.
Laurie, thank you so much for your involvement in this as well. You're a great community partner, and we really appreciate what you do in our community.
She's been doing it for a long time, we appreciate her.
Yes, very good.
So Chief, who fixed the chili for the police station?
Matt Davis and Karen Borts, and they were the, and Kelly Hottig.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Shanahan, I think you have another one you'd like to present?
Thank you, yeah, it's been a lot of fun. We not only were honored to be a part of the Chili Cook-Off to continue here, but we are, we put on the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast at Lexington County Baseball Stadium every year. We've just finished our, our third, Jonathan Johnson shared his testimony. Jonathan was a former major league pitcher, and now at Columbia International University. And, you know, it's a, it's a great way for citizens of Lexington to get together and just pray for our community, and that's what, that's what we do, and Mayor, I thank you. You know, Mayor literally gets up in the morning and cooks the breakfast and brings it. So it's, it's a wonderful morning of fellowship, and this year, we're really thankful that we're able to provide a donation to Linda Brown with the Levine Pregnancy Care Center. And Mayor, will you come up here and? Yeah, I'd be happy to. Present the check to Linda. What great work she's doing.
So on behalf of the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, here is a check for you, to help you with your census at Levine. So open that up. Take a picture.
It's $500.
You're welcome, you're welcome. Yes, absolutely. Come on, hugs are free, come on, let's get a picture, come on.
Okay. I've got one last thing, and then we're going to get out of here. It's amazing, but Vicki and I now have been back in Lexington now. This is our sixth season, but sixth year, and that first year, Lexington didn't have the St. Patrick's Parade, so we decided to start one. And really, our goal all along was to just make it a family, fun, free event, like all the wonderful events that are going on in Lexington. I, I gotta tell you, I've been around a lot of parades and events, and there's nothing like your snowball parade. We can be proud of the success and the crowds that come out to be a part of that, and so the Shamrock Parade is just growing, it's just starting, okay? We're in our fifth year, and I do want to let you know that we are the only Shamrock Parade in the United States of America. Everyone else is St. Patrick's?
Yeah.
No, but we're going to promote the Shamrock, because that's what Patrick did when he went to Ireland as a missionary. Patrick went there to share the word by using the three-leaf clover shamrock to teach the Holy Trinity, the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. So here we are in the Town of Lexington, and who's getting all the credit? It's the Lord. So let me just pass on to all of you a poster, for next, it's about a week and a half away, and we want everyone to be a part of this, and please, take this poster and take it to a business that doesn't have it in there, and let everybody know, we've got another great event for families right here in the Town of Lexington.
Very good. Bill, we can't thank you and Vicki enough for everything y'all do in the town. You've been, we talked about community partners just a minute ago, but y'all have been an outstanding community partner. We're sad that you're not on Main Street anymore, but we want you to know that anything that we do here in and around town, you're always welcome. The door is always open for you and Blowey to always show up, and, and I've been around a lot of promoters in my life, you're one of the best I've ever seen.
Thank you, thank you all, thank you.
Thank you so much. At this time, I will give a vision plan update for our March meeting. The 2020 Municipal Achievement Award was handed out this year for populations from 10,000 to 20,000, and guess who won? Town of Lexington. We are the winner of the 2020 Municipal Achievement Award for our Adaptive Signalization System and Preemption Project. The Achievement Awards Program has three main objectives. One is to recognize innovative projects, to share those projects with other municipalities, and to demonstrate the value of cities and towns. Entry was judged on innovation, efficient use of resources, the role of the city's overall vision, effective use of partnerships, quantifiable results, and adaptability to other hometowns. The award again was a 10,000 to 20,000 population category. Will be officially presented to the Town of Lexington this summer at our meeting with the Municipal Association down in Charleston. We're very, very excited about that. That is the link of lights that we added on, and from where our adaptive ended, all the way down to the City of Columbia that runs through the City of West Columbia. We had a great partnership with the City of West Columbia, the Lexington Hospital, and DOT aligning all those lights. So right now, we control the lights from Jim Hudson Ford to the last light before you get into the City of Columbia. So if we had a natural disaster or something, we needed to create a green light tunnel, we could absolutely create that green light tunnel and get people to safety very quickly, but feel very good about the results that we're having with those lights, especially around the hospital, and allowing those emergency vehicles to come and go as they needed to freely through that area. So very excited about that achievement award, and, and what a great job Lauren Barnes did in presenting that award to the Municipal Association and writing it in a way that I think won the award for us. So good job Lauren. Our next update is we haven't, we're asking for an RFP coming up next month, so if you have an idea for something on Main Street, be on the lookout for an exciting development opportunity that will be announced very soon. So we have a piece of property that's located right next door to Aladea's on Main Street. We are asking for requests for proposals and ideas from developers to open that lot on West Main Street. So if you're interested in that, look out for that RFP coming out next month. The Ice House Amphitheater update, tomorrow, the Pavilion Project at the Ice House Amphitheater bid will open at 2:00. Once awarded, construction is expected to begin soon after that. The goal for the Pavilion is to be completed by this year. In addition to the Pavilion, there will be additional women's restrooms and air conditioning, I know all of y'all are excited about that, added to the current facilities. This weekend, there are two events at the amphitheater, so please visit the amphitheater's Facebook page for all those details. Each month, I announce what's going on in and around Lexington, all of the results of the vision plan that we created in 2012. We actually reviewed it and updated it last summer. You can read the entire vision plan on the Town's webpage. Please share your thoughts with us if you have any ideas that will help improve the quality of life for our community. That is the vision plan update for March 2020. At this time, I will ask Mayor Protam for a traffic update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The SC DOT has begun patchwork along South Lake Drive between Fort Street and Gibson Road as part of a surface rehabilitation plan. Please be aware of lane closures, lane shifts, and use extra caution in and around this area for the next several weeks. Along Columbia Avenue 378 between Reed Avenue and Old Chapin Road, the development of Andy's Car Wash has begun. This work requires some intermittent lane shifts and possible closures as construction of a raised median is completed. Work continues on the deceleration lane at the New Hampton Inn being constructed along Sunset Boulevard 378. Please use caution as periodic lane shifts will be used during this construction, and the next traffic committee meeting will be held on Wednesday, March 11th, at 8:00 a.m. in the third floor conference room at Town Hall. Also, if you're aware of any traffic issues in the town, please contact 358-7273.
Very good, thank you Mayor Protam. At this time, we'll move into public hearings. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Our first public hearing this evening is final reading of an ordinance to authorize issuance of general obligation bonds and bond anticipation notes for 2020. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Very good. Our second item, final reading of an ordinance to amend the Ice House Tax Increment Financing Ordinance. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. Our final reading this evening is final reading of an ordinance rezoning Lexington County Tax Map, number 4300-04-167, and 4300-01-076, and a portion of 4300-01-064 located off of Kaufman Farm Lane. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. That concludes our public hearings for this evening. We will move right into old business. Our first item of old business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. Final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map, number 4323-05-011, located on 702 West Main Street. Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Marshall Davis owns .69 acres located at 702 West Main Street and has petitioned to annex the property. A custom home builder is planning to construct a model home sales office on the site. Properties in the town near this one are zoned general commercial, and West Main Street is classified as an arterial road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation in July of 2019 and recommended office commercial zoning for the property and arterial road classification for West Main Street. A public hearing was held on January 6, 2020. During Council's January 6, 2020 meeting, a motion carried to table the item for one month and hold the utility service for one month and make a final decision at the next council member meeting to allow the developer time to address the connectivity issues. At the February 3, 2020 meeting, council tabled the item for an additional month. Site plan was received from the developer's attorney with a note that the developer and the church had agreed on the attached site plan. I make a motion for final reading approval of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map, number 4323-05-011, located at 702 West Main Street as general commercial.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second, so motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Todd Carons. Final reading of an ordinance to authorize issuance of general obligation bonds and bond anticipation notes of 2020. Councilmember Carons.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Scrolling, scrolling, here we go. All right. The Town's General Government Capital Improvements Plan for fiscal years 2020 through 2024 totals approximately $13.4 million. Financing plan provides for construction, or construction period project costs to be initially financed by bond anticipation notes or bands. Permanent long-term financing will ultimately be accomplished with a mix of general obligation bonds and revenue bonds supported by impact fee and hospitality tax revenues. In order to issue general obligation bonds and related bands, the town must adopt an ordinance providing for the issuance of the bonds and the town must adopt an ordinance providing for the issuance of the bonds and bands. To provide maximum flexibility, the ordinance will provide for authorization of up to $8 million. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for final reading approval of an ordinance to authorize issuance of general obligation bonds and bond anticipation notes of 2020.
Councilmember Cornes makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker seconds. A motion, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. Final reading of an ordinance to amend the Ice House Tax Increment Financing Ordinance. Councilmember Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Ice House TIF Bond Ordinance needs to be updated and amended to address issuance of additional rollover refunding of bands. Due to the flood of 2015, the Old Mill Trail Project has not been completed. The trail is one of the redevelopment projects in the Ice House Redevelopment Plan, which needs to be completed prior to issuance of long-term TIF financing. Project delay has resulted in banned rollover refundings beyond the time provided in the original ordinance. Additionally, other tax law-related modifications are needed to ensure compliance with all IRS regulations governing these types of financing. I'd like to make a final reading of an ordinance to amend the Ice House Tax Increment Finance Ordinance as a motion.
Mr. Williams makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Manis seconds. A motion, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. Final reading of an ordinance rezoning Lexington County Tax Map, number 4300-04-167, 4300-01-076, and a portion of 4300-01-064 located off of Kaufman Farm Lane. Councilmember Steve Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Springdale Development has requested to rezone property located at 191 Kaufman Farm Lane from general commercial and limited commercial to protected residential, too. The request is being made to facilitate the development of an 81-unit subdivision. Properties adjacent to this one are zoned general commercial and protected residential. The Planning Commission reviewed this request during their January meeting and recommended approval of the rezoning. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cornes seconds. A motion, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we will move right into new business. Our first item of new business is from Councilwoman Kathy Manis. First reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map, number 3500-03-014, located at 4532 Darby Ambrose Road. I said Councilmember Manis, but this is for Councilmember Todd Cornes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kenneth Schuler owns a one acre located at 4532 Darby Ambrose Road and has petitioned to annex the property. The property is currently undeveloped. Properties in town near this one are zoned general commercial and limited commercial. Darby Ambrose Road is classified as a limited local road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their February meeting and recommended limited commercial zoning and limited local road classification for this parcel. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Cornes makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker seconds. A motion, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. Resolution in support of the National League of Cities Agenda for the 2020 Presidential Election. Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I have had the honor of serving on this task force that did this, so I'm happy to bring tonight that the National League of Cities has asked local leaders to introduce and adopt the 2020 Cities Agenda as an official mark of support for leading together to secure America's brighter future. So I make a motion that we adopt the resolution.
Very good. Ms. Manis makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cornes seconds. A motion, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business would be from Mayor Pro Tem. She had to step out. She's not feeling well. This is going to be a Market at Ice House policy update. Ms. Manis agreed to read that as well. Ms. Manis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. At the February 18th, 2020 Work Session, Council discussed modifications to the policy for the Ice, for the Market at Ice House. The updated policy is attached. I make a motion for Council approval.
Ms. Manis makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Williams seconds. A motion, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Baker.
Can we just get a brief update on what those changes were, just for the record?
Yes, sir. Mr. Walker Brewer is here. Seems like he's handing out $20 bills, because Bill Shanahan was giving him high praise.
I wish. No, the policy update simply clarified some of the registration requirements, specifically around booth for a cause. It also added a deposit that'll be required from the vendors to participate, and just cleaned up some of the language in the policy.
Thank you.
Very good, Walker. Thank you. And we do all agree, you're doing a fantastic job there.
Walker, can you explain the, the deposit to me, please, for the vendors?
The deposit will work very similar to how we do with our rental deposits. Pretty much if the vendors show up and they say they're going to show up, obey the rules, and behave, they get their $75 deposit back.
So for the people who are doing the farmer's market, they pay $75 every Saturday?
No, maybe it'd be a one deposit for the-
The whole season, okay.
Now, if something happens and that deposit would be withheld, they would have to make another deposit in order to be able to re-enter into the market. But one deposit would work for the whole season.
And that's real clear in here, right?
That's the way I understood it when I wrote it.
Yeah, it was a rolling.
Rolling deposit, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Very good. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Cornes. Building Permit Fee Waiver. Councilmember Cornes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Habitat for Humanity is planning to construct several homes in the town of Lexington. The estimated construction value of each of these homes is $70,000, which creates a building permit cost of $512.15 for each home. Council has been asked to waive the permit fees for all of the Habitat for Humanity homes to be constructed in order to support the organization's mission of helping families build places to call home. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for approval of waiver of these permit fees.
Councilmember Cornes makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams seconds. A motion, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cornes.
Just real quick, while we've got everybody's attention, just want to call everybody's attention to this. I don't know if I have the numbers exactly right, but I'm pretty sure Habitat's planning on building 10 new homes and doing upfit and rehab to multiple more, kind of in the downtown Lexington area. And so churches, civic groups, friend groups, all groups. If you're interested in putting your hands to a hammer on a Saturday or Sunday, formulating a group and making our community better, I really encourage you to reach out to Habitat for Humanity and be, be a part of this process. That's going to be a great blessing to a lot of people in our community. And want to give a shout out to some of the people that have already got on board with some of our local churches. Appreciate everything everybody's doing.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Cornes. Anyone else? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. Boards and Commissions, Council Liaisons. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. During Council's February 18, 2020 Work Session, Council discussed several options concerning Council Liaisons. A motion was made to discontinue the practice of assigning Council Liaisons, since all meetings are open to the public and can be attended by any or all Council members, and to continue staff liaisons to eight boards, with the exception of Central Midlands Cog and the Joint Municipal Water and Sewer Commission, and to include the directive that each Council member be supplied with an email summary of each meeting, so they can all relate to the boards, all to be effective at the time of the vote. If proved, staff liaisons are to provide Council a summary in bullet point format of the board or commission meetings that they attend. I make a motion for Council approval.
Mr. Baker makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Williams seconds. A motion, any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Cornes.
Am I reading that right? I think there's a continue there where it's supposed to be discontinue. Is that right?
A motion was made to discontinue the practice of assigning-
Discontinuing staff liaisons to eight boards, with the exception of Central Midlands Cog and Joint Municipal Water and Sewer.
The staff, the staff instead of council.
Staff liaisons. Excuse me. Thank you.
Another point of clarification. Yes, sir, Mr. Poole.
Mr. Mayor, it was my understanding, but not the way the motion was read, that that requirement to report out would be for boards and commissions that don't produce minutes.
Correct.
Is that changed, or is that correct?
That is correct.
For the board, that's not what the motion was. Mr. Baker made the motion, and I second it.
Yes, sir. Mr. Baker, would you like to restate your-
I actually, I actually stated it how I meant it to. I, I've enjoyed getting the, the kind of bullet points from the different folks, since we've asked for that from our staff, and actually read it how I meant to. Provide Council a summary in bullet point format of the board or commission's meeting that do not currently produce minutes. Okay? So it would just be the bullet points and the minutes, instead of one or the other?
We'd get the bullet point, basically what your motion was, was supposed to get bullet points from the staff person that attended the meeting-
Correct.
-after the meeting was over.
Correct.
And then we would get minutes like we normally do.
Correct.
All right. Very good. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed? Very good. At this time, we will hear announcements from Ron Williams.
The American Legion welcomed Nicole Clapp to Lexington today by reading a proclamation from the mayor and council to honor her. Ms. Clapp is the American Legion Auxiliary National President from Iowa, and she will be visiting South Carolina for a few days. We'd like to welcome President Clapp here to town. This will be another busy spring at the Ice House Amphitheater. The Lexington Live Free Spring Concert Series runs for seven weeks this year, starting with Finesse Band on April the 9th. Please visit icehouseamphitheater.com for a complete list, and also like their page on Facebook. Other upcoming events at the Ice House Amphitheater include the movie Playing with Fire will be showing this Friday, March the 6th, at 6:30, and it's free. Pack the Pantry is this Saturday at 1:00 p.m. with live bands and benefit, and it benefits Mission Lexington. Please remember to bring a canned good for admission. The Eagles Tribute Band on the border is sold out. Brewer did an excellent job on selling that pretty quick, I understand. But there's still time to get tickets for Sister Hazel, which is on June the 12th, at 6:00 p.m. for $28. The Board of Zoning Appeals will meet this Thursday at 5:30 here in Council Chambers. Don't forget this weekend to spring forward, put your clocks, as we adjust for daylight savings time. The Advisory Board will meet on March the 10th at 6:00 in the Eli Mac Room. The Traffic Committee will meet on March the 11th at 8:00 a.m. in the third floor conference room. The St. Patrick's Shamrock Parade will be on Main Street in Lexington on Saturday, March the 14th, at 2:00. Council will meet again on March 16th at 6:00 for Council's Work Session downstairs in the Eli Mac Room. The Planning Commission will meet on March 18th at 8:00 a.m. here in the Council Chambers. Thank you for watching your town council in action tonight.
Very good. Anyone else have any other announcements they'd like to make?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to wish Councilmember Ron Williams a happy birthday on this Friday. So happy birthday.
Very good. Anyone else? I would like to send out condolences to the family of Bobby Bowers. He passed away yesterday unexpectedly. I'm sorry, the day before unexpectedly. He was in the hospital, passed away. He was a great Lexingtonian, been here as long as I've been here. He was just a great guy to be around. He was a part of the Lions Club, always involved in things that were happening in and around town. I had a staff member tell me earlier, they worked with him on several occasions, and he was very, very helpful in everything that he did. We're going to miss him. He's a wonderful guy. So condolences to the family, and we're thinking and praying for you.
Mr. Mayor, he was very instrumental in drawing the lines for our state government and redistricting, and I know the House and Senate's getting ready to do that again, and he will definitely be missed there.
Definitely be missed. Anyone else? Are there any, is there anyone in the public regarding tonight's agenda that would like to add anything? Very good. That concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the town council meeting for the town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall Monday evening, March 2nd, 2020. Recording of this meeting will be aired on the town's information cable channel, 1301, several times during the week, this week, and the video will be available on the town's webpage at lexsc.com. Without objection, we are adjourned.